Everybody? Let's go ahead and call this a work session of the Washington County School District Board of Trustees to order, and we're going to start. Madam Clerk, with our roll call.
Alrighty. President Taylor.
I'm here.
All right, I've got to get my pencil so it works. There we go. Vice President Caudill.
Here.
Someday, I'm going to say your name right. I am here. Jacqueline Calvert.
Here.
Keep hope alive.
Jeff Church. All right. Diane Nicolet.
Present.
All right. Kirk Figpen.
Hello.
Hello. Everybody's here, and we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For our pledge of allegiance, we're going to ask Counsel Chris Reich, who is sitting in for Chief General Counsel, as Deputy General Counsel, to lead us in the pledge, if you would, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll get right to if we have any public comment, any public comment on this, for this work session.
We do not.
I'm looking for JJ. I don't see any. Oh, there's back there in the back. Hey, JJ.
We have no public comment.
Okay, thank you very much, and we'll get right down to it and get to Agenda Item 1.05, and I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice President Caudill, seconded by Clerk Minetto. Are those in favor? Any discussion? Are those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, the motion's carried. Let the record show it is unanimous, and we'll jump right down into our presentation and discussion and action on the budget. This is a discussion by the board regarding the district's fiscal year 21, '22 budget process and status, update on state and federal funding, revenue and expenditure estimates for the general fund, recommended next steps for the budget process, and consideration of possible direction to the superintendent and staff. This is for discussion and possible action, and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mathers, our CFO, and he has some friends.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. Trustees, Superintendent Dr. McNeil, I'm Mark Mathers, Chief Financial Officer, and with me to give you this scintillating budget presentation is our new Budget Director, Jeff Bazo, new as in that position, but certainly not new to the district, and to the right of Jeff is our Chief Accountability Officer, I still call him our Grant Czar, Ben Hayes. So before we start, let me kind of give you a few preliminary remarks, just to set the stage. Today's budget work session is the first of six monthly budget discussions we plan to have with you through June, so we'll be doing this every month through at least the month of June. For new trustees, I know this is a lot of information to digest in the PowerPoint presentation today, and if that wasn't enough, we've provided you some extremely thick binders, providing you our general fund and special education fund and certain other funds' budgets on a line item by line item basis for your perusal. But certainly, given all of the data here, if you have questions along the way, please feel free to ask them. We try to stay away from too much terminology, but some of this is just endemic to the kind of topic we're talking about, so if there's any questions you have about what does that mean, please feel free to ask along the way. We don't want to lose you, you know, kind of a third of the way in. So, you know, we're in an odd number of years, and that means legislature meets, the state prepares its budget, the state approves its budget in late May, early June. And so, in odd number of years like this, the budget process is very challenging, I'll say it in a politically correct way, and more so even this year, again, with the new president, possible federal legislation to come, we're in the midst of a pandemic, as you know, so there are a lot of variables. But because we're so dependent on state funding, you know, the twists and turns of the legislative session will undoubtedly impact us, and this last week was a good example of that. We were prepared to bring to you our analysis that the Pupil-Centered Funding Plan, and then the governor, just last week, made a proposal to phase in the Pupil-Centered Funding Plan over time, and we'll talk about that. But that, again, is a good example of how things can change on a dime, and we're in the midst of analyzing that proposal. There was a Legislative Commission meeting on Friday, just Friday, in which numbers from the state were just released concerning the new Pupil-Centered Funding Plan and how the phase-in actually would work. So we have been going through that this weekend, and again, that's just an example of how things can change very quickly, up to and through the end of the session. So where we start, in terms of K-12 funding as part of this budget process, is probably not where we're going to end up, but we'll keep you updated on issues and analysis and those twists and turns as soon as we can, certainly at each of our monthly meetings. So with that preamble out of the way, I'll start the presentation. This is Slide 2, to provide you with an agenda. So Ben and I are going to go through and update you on state and federal funding, first of all, because that is one of the knowns we have, at least partially, and then I'll, again, I'll cover the phase-in of the Pupil-Centered Funding Plan under Item 1B, and then Jeff is going to guide you through what we had planned to be a, for a discussion of our preliminary budget estimate for the general fund and an outline in Number 3 of proposed budget strategies we intend to follow through the budget process. And then Jeff and I, in Item Number 4, will go over preliminary outlooks for other funds. So naturally, this presentation's focused on the general fund, our primary operating fund, our largest fund, but there are other funds that can impact the general fund, there are other funds that are critically important as well, so we'll go through those in Item 4, and then, under Item 5, we'll talk about next steps, but here particularly, we are looking for your feedback about what you'd like to see in terms of data or communication from us throughout the process, and we'll talk about budget forums and budget surveys as well, and we want your input, so hopefully, we'll get some input from you during that last part of the process. So in terms of the update on federal funding, we'll go to Slide 4, and I think Ben was planning to cover this.
Thank you, Mark. For the record, Ben Hayes, Chief Accountability Officer, I get the fun part of saying kind of what we're spending right now, and then I'll turn it back over to Mr. Mathers, the even more optimistic and fun part of what we're going to spend. So the first, this is where the first grant that we got for COVID relief was approximately nine million, a little over nine million, and that's kind of, that's what really saved us last summer and going forward into this year. So the focus area, the first and the last slide, you can, rose on this table that you see, really were around our teachers, number one, of course, saving jobs, but also making sure that we can provide the education that we want to provide in this hectic year. So the lot of, this summer, the AB3, Assembly Bill 3, and the Special Session, cut GT programming in a big, big way, so we were able to kind of pick that up to make sure a softer landing could occur. Classroom aids, also bodies for social distancing in those areas, and then English language development, some PPE, certainly, in that last focus area. And then in the middle, it was more around serving, kind of creating equity during this time, as much as we can for our families. So Focus Area 3, where we put some money, support for our family resource centers, to make sure that it's hard, hard to hit your education with momentum if you don't have some of the support that your family needs, including food and bills and the like and aid. So some help there with our family resource centers, distance learning and hotspots. You've seen how much we've worked, the whole state, to provide connectivity and devices to students so that they can log in and do their work, so we spent a good amount there. And Focus Area 5, under McKinney-Vento, that's for helping our children in transition, of course, similar to what I talked about, the family resource centers, making sure we have some re-engagement and engagement liaisons to help the students that are struggling with homelessness. And then finally, social and emotional learning, including counselors and our SEL, Social and Emotional Learning Coaches, that I think we'd all agree, they've been incredibly helpful for supporting schools, and they've given a whole bunch of resources, not only person-to-person or Zoom-to-person, coaching on social and emotional and counseling, learning and counseling, they've provided a whole bunch of resources throughout the summer and throughout this year on website activities that schools can kind of do to keep their kids connected and the like. So that's for the ESER. I'd be remiss if I didn't say that we've worked, we've been very fortunate to work with a lot of our local agencies on other funding, so the City of Reno let us go with their AB3, their Assembly Bill funding, their COVID relief funding, and buy devices, so that we got approximately, I would say, three mil, yeah, three million for just purely devices, and a little bit for nutrition services. City of Sparks helped us with about $60,000 for nutrition service and equipment. Washoe County helped us with nurses and, you know, help for employee nurses, and finally, the Reno Housing Authority helped us as well. And then we had our own Assembly Bill 3 funding in the district that we were able to buy devices and some more coverage for subs and things like that. So with that, that's kind of what we've been budgeting and spent to get us through this year. There are still a lot of gaps and a lot of support that needs to occur, so I'll hand it over to Mark to kind of go over what the plans are, or at least what we can do and what we're thinking about the rest. Is that good, Mark?
Thanks, Ben, and certainly feel free to jump in. So, you know, after passage of the CARES Act and our allocation of ESER monies in March, Congress, of course, as you remember, late December passed another stimulus bill. This was passed into law, and I'm on Slide 5 now, and this provided for $900 billion for coronavirus relief, so it was part of the Continuing Appropriations Act, a lot of people call this CARES Act 2, it has a long title that doesn't have a nice acronym, so we'll just call it CARES Act 2 as well. Significantly, I think, school districts, K-12 across the country, got to the top of the priority list with this legislation, and that was really nice to see. And the CARES Act, you know, candidly, we've talked before about our portion of CARES Act monies was a fraction of what our neighboring cities and county received. This new bill is different, and again, it passed, so there is a total of $54.3 billion allocated for public K-12 schools. There's an additional $4.05 billion for Governor's Emergency Education Relief, or what you've heard before called GIRS funds, and out of that, there's a separate allocation for private schools. So this is unlike the CARES Act, where you saw the district got $9.9 million, and then $700,000 went to charter schools and private schools. This is different in that there's separate funding provided for private schools, so that won't eat into the $54 billion in that, in that top line for public K-12 schools. And then there's also $23 billion or so allocated for higher education, which I'm sure they appreciate. So this is the largest K-12 relief program in history. There is not specific funding for homework gap or what we call academic recovery, but it is an allowable use, as we'll talk about, but there wasn't specific funding that went towards broadband or so forth, but certainly, those are allowable uses. So then, turning to Slide 6, again, $54.3 billion for public schools. Of that, states may reserve up to 10% for competitive grants or other purposes, and including half of 1% for administration. So I think we've been waiting to understand how much the state would kind of siphon off, if you will, off that $54 billion for these competitive grants, and Ben, I think the state has come out and said, but, yeah, I think they've indicated they will take the full 10%. So there is a process to this. We're waiting to hear from the state on the process they will use to allocate our monies. We haven't gotten definitive word yet on that. Hopefully, that'll happen very soon. These funds, in the law says they must be spent by September 30th of 2022, but by the vagaries of federal grants, they actually won't have to be spent until September 30th of 2023. So this provides some funding for us over the next two fiscal years, fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23, and even three months into fiscal year '24. Importantly, there was some maintenance of effort requirements on both states and ourselves. The state's maintenance of effort requirement is kind of twofold, as we understand it. They must maintain spending based on the average of the last three prior fiscal years, and they also cannot reduce K-12 funding in their state budget more than they cut other functions. So this tries to avoid them cutting us in anticipation of us receiving our portion of the $54 billion. And then the school districts have to continue to pay their employees and contractors during any closures to the greatest extent possible, and there are waivers available for states for that state MOE requirement. Hopefully, those don't come into play here.
Madam President, can I ask a question?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So I have, I have three questions on this slide, Mark. Just want to get some clarification, make sure I understand. So does the school district have to reserve all of our funds at once with the state, then we would receive it all at once? Is that how that works?
No, and I'm going to look to Ben a little bit here, but they have a process where we are to apply for the grant, then we are approved for that grant, and then we are paid on a reimbursement basis.
Okay, so since the funds will be available through September 30th of 2023, does that mean then our allocation is a certain amount, and then we have until then to apply for it all?
No, we, we must, they'll provide application deadlines that we'll have to submit. Now, we're allowed to amend those, those plans, but they'll provide an application process with an application deadline to us. Then they'll approve or require us to make changes to our application, and then that application will spell out which of the buckets or areas indicated in their grant guidelines we intend to fund. They'll approve that and award that to us, and then as long as we spend within those categories on eligible expenses, we will be reimbursed over time. So we must spend the monies by September 30th of 2023.
Perfect. So it's a reimbursement, so there's no need for us to store that money through different fiscal years.
Right.
It'll be reimbursed, so then it'll be up to you and your team, as we're spending it, to fit it right within the fiscal years, so then the reimbursements come in right, so that'll kind of be something that you're charged with. And the last question I have is about the MOE. So how does this impact potential cuts for us? Because I know we're all planning for cuts, so do we have kind of a, an estimate on, well, we can only be cut up to this much, because if they go further, they're actually violating part of this, this, this stimulus act? Do we, how is that going to work?
Yeah, we're still digging through the state budget. It's an enormous document. It's very complicated to read. We'll go through that analysis to assure ourselves that K-12 is not being cut more than the rest of the state, but the state is also aware of these requirements, and it would be surprising that they might try to do that. I really don't think that'll happen, but we'll go through that analysis.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Trustee Church? I'm sorry, Trustee Church.
I think you kind of, same question. I think what I'm hearing you say is the state's aware of this, and we can pretty well count on the state not to do something that's going to violate, because if they did, we're, I don't know what word to use, but we're in trouble.
Yeah, I mean, they'd have to apply for a waiver from the federal government, and they'd be allowed to try to do that, and hopefully, we'd be made aware of that, yes.
And then, previously, what you said about it, there's a section in here about not, about keeping employees.
Yes.
God forbid it comes to this, but layoffs, furloughs, pay cuts, how does that affect any of that in our bargaining stance?
Well, this is in a kind of a statement of intent here in the, in the federal legislation, right, and it says, to the greatest extent, practical, practicable, and certainly, we don't want to have layoffs. You know, our normal approach here is to reduce positions, but through the overage process and through placement of employees, we don't want to lay anyone off. So I think this is not inconsistent with historically our approach. That's not to say there won't need to be reductions, but it should not result in someone not having a position.
And again, I get you said, "to the greatest extent practicable," which is an interesting legal term, but okay.
Yes, yes.
Please, go right ahead, Mr. Mathers.
So on Slide 7, this lists the potential uses, and LEA's Local Education Agency for, so basically, for every school district, these are the allowable uses. For this federal stimulus money, this is very similar to wording in the CARES Act, provides for funding for any allowable activity under ESEA, IDEA, Adult Education, Perkins, pretty much everything we do falls within those guidelines. Certainly, COVID preparedness and response activities are funded. And then in italics are several new allowable uses specifically called out in this legislation versus the CARES Act. One, and these are quotes from the bill, one is addressing learning loss. The second one is school facilities repair and improvements, which might not apply so much to us, but both of those are new clauses for allowable uses. And then the last item here on Slide 7 is kind of, again, legalese, but basically, this is saying you can use these monies to cover any budget shortfalls. So this was language provided in the CARES Act ESER funding legislation, and it appears again in CARES Act 2. So very broad parameters that we're able to use.
Mark, can I jump in for one second?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to tell the board, as you're going in, especially the new board members, this slide is important to us as a district, because it gives us, and the state has said as much, it gives us some flexibility, so what we were saying earlier, we have to grant deadlines to apply for, but we have three years to expend them. We're not stuck with the original application. If something comes, we need to be nimble, especially during this time. If something comes up emergent, that is what's best for kids in our schools, then we're able to amend or change the grant as we need to do what's best to serve our schools.
Thank you, Ben. On Slide 8, then, there's, we go over other sections of the CARES Act 2.0. We'll talk about nutrition services much later in the presentation, but it was, again, nice to see some specific relief for our Nutrition Services Fund, and that was not in the CARES Act. And basically, it sets a floor of our, for our revenues going backwards to the second half of March and then April through June, so three and a half months, we'll be able to go back, and we'll give you the numbers later, but basically, it says, whatever your federal reimbursement revenue was for those months, and that's most of the nutrition services revenues, we will receive no less than 55% of that. So it's a nice little floor, and it does result in significant money that will go back into that fund and help shore up that fund. And then, you know, we, we thought it was interesting that the bill provides for $3 billion for low-income families to access broadband, so hopefully, the feds will roll that program out, and our families can use that, and that would be great. And then there's an additional $1 billion for tribal broadband, for a tribal broadband fund, and we know, you know, getting a connection out there in some of those areas has been very difficult. So that's great to see, and hopefully, we in Washoe County can take advantage of that. And then lastly, you know, we were hopeful that there might be some specific funding for devices or connectivity through the E-Rate program, and there was not, but I, you know, I really can't complain, given the dollar amounts here that go to K-12. And then on the next slide, there is funding for testing tracing and COVID-19 mitigation and vaccine distribution, so that is also nice. That's, again, in CARES Act 2, which passed and was signed into law in late December. So we don't have a drumroll sound here, but on Slide 10, we provide an estimate. Oh, that's not a drumroll sound. There we go. There we go. So again, we're relying on estimates here. We don't have absolute confirmation that the state will take 10% off the top for competitive grants, but we are estimating, and Ben, I don't know if you have any more recent information, but between $31 and $35 million that will come to Washoe County School District for all those uses you saw, that must be spent by September 30th of 2023. So between 30 and 35 million is our estimate. And in total, the state shares $477 million, based on estimates we've seen. So you may see that mentioned in the course of the state's budget, and that, you know, the state's pretty, pretty spot-on in terms of their estimate of total funding for school districts in Nevada. You know, in terms of development of recommendations-
May I ask a question while you're getting your tech stuff done there?
Yes, please, sorry.
I just want to make my understanding, so we got roughly $9 million under the first CARES Act. The second CARES Act is based on grant applications around $35 million maxed, more or less.
Between 30 and 35 million. Both the CARES Act in March, there was a grant application process that was managed by the state. There will be, again, for CARES Act 2, but you're right about the numbers. $9.9 million gross, $9.2 million net, in terms of CARES Act ESER dollars that came to us, and then between 30 and 35 million as a result of CARES Act 2.
Do, pardon me, do we anticipate any coordinating for grants with other school districts or agents?
I don't think that the bill would allow for that, but, but, I mean, if there's something creative regionally we could do, that might come under the competitive side of the, of the CARES Act 2 monies that we could pursue.
Thank you. One more, Mr. Mathers.
I'm sorry.
Dr. Diane.
It's hard for me to see you.
I know, right? It's competitive grants. Can you give us a couple specifics as to what those are and what we can be looking at in hopes of attaining them?
We haven't got the information. We're watching every day and working with the state. They've collected some information. What they'll do is kind of come up with probably two or three focus areas. I suspect one of them's going to be connectivity, and the other, definitely a mental well-being area. So what they'll do is, say, within these three areas comply, I'm sorry, apply for a competitive act. What they did last time on the competitive, they opened it up to not just school districts, but other nonprofits that could partner with school districts to serve our kids.
And if I may, Madam President, to your question, Trustee Church, and so a lot of times, the state, when they take that 10%, they will work with NASS, with the Superintendent's group, to see what some priorities are that we would all collectively engage in. A lot of times, that may be around professional development, to what Ben was talking about, mental health, but typically, it's collective conversation as far as, so what is it that districts would like to see?
Thank you. Trustee Figpen?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So this is, this is an estimate, $31 to $35 million, and we still, we still have to apply for this. We haven't gone, we haven't done that yet, correct?
That's correct. The application has not come out yet.
Okay, okay, awesome. Thank you.
I'll forge ahead, then. So, you know, a significant part, and we'll talk about this in the slides ahead, but a significant part of our budget process really is going to be the identification of new programming and other uses for this federal money. Excuse me. You know, from our perspective, and this may sound strange from business and financing, we want to use as little as possible of this funding to shore up our budget. We want to do as much work as we need to, to come to a, get to a structurally balanced budget that doesn't rely on limited-term or one-time federal monies to get us through, right? Now, we may need to do that, and we may need to do that to phase down some, some funding for certain programming, but we're hopeful that we can use the bulk of this money on activities like academic recovery, mental health, social and emotional learning, and so that, that will come in under the sphere of Debbie Byersdorff and the Superintendent and Ben Hayes and others to develop that new programming. That's going to take some time, but that is one kind of sliver or sleeve of the budget process, is the development of that new programming and then the estimates of costs for that new program. So that's the hope, that we can use most of this money to provide that kind of additional programming we need for academic recovery and other uses. Excuse me, got a new mask. You know, again, though, some limited amount can be used to pace out reductions, perhaps to weighted funding or even the general fund due to the reductions from the state. So that money is available for that. Again, we want to minimize, though, avoiding decisions we need to reset the general fund budget to where our state funding amount will be on a more permanent basis. So we want to have as, as much as possible a structurally balanced budget going forward, and so we'll see how that plays out over the session, of course, but at least tentatively, that's what the superintendent leadership team have identified as kind of our priority list of the use of these monies.
Thank you, Mr. Mathers. We have another question. Trustee Nicolet.
Thank you, President. I'm, I think I'm probably getting ahead of us, but this last bullet should not be used to avoid decisions? I really have no idea what that means.
Well, what we're saying is, what we shouldn't be doing is reliant, being reliant on one-time federal- federal monies to kick the can down the road. And so, you know, based on the analysis of the pupil-centered funding plan and the state budget, if we know our funding's going to be set at X, we need to get our budget down to X and not rely on the federal stimulus monies to cover us and not make any tough decisions, is what I'm saying, for the next, you know, year or two and just kick that can and then be faced with those same decisions three years from now. So that's what I'm trying to say.
So the next phrase, reset the general fund budget.
Yep.
You're really just saying that you want to keep, you want to have that baseline so that we don't have to redo our general fund budget if we don't get certain monies or what is reset the general fund budget?
Well, you are kind of going a little further down in the presentation, but what we're saying is if our funding is set at a certain level based on the pupil-centered funding plan, and if our funding is set based on where we think enrollment will stabilize at, we need, and so along with that comes a total amount of revenues, right? So say that's 500 million. We need to set the budget, and it could be phased over time, but eventually set that budget so that expenditures, appropriations equal that 500 million in revenue and not rely on the federal stimulus dollars and take 15 million a year to avoid the decisions we need to make to get to a structurally balanced budget. Does that make sense? Okay.
Superintendent McNeil?
So I'll just add, I think we all heard the term a funding cliff, and that's what we're trying to avoid using these federal dollars, is that you would never, never want to be able to use your federal dollars for something that would be going on year after year after year.
Thank you. I mean, this is incredibly complicated, and again, we'll be touching base with you every month to share what we know and kind of share our preliminary estimate of those resources so that you can see where we need to get. And ultimately, it is a policy decision of this board as to how much of that stimulus funding can go towards, you know, budget relief versus new programming and so forth. That, at the end of the day, is going to probably be the decision you'll have to make for that final budget or amended budget in May and June. So that really is it in terms of CARES Act two, unless there's other questions. We did want to share, because this is the good part of the presentation. This is the hopeful part of the presentation, right? As you know, President Biden has talked about another round of stimulus funding. It is, his proposal is significant. Where we end up, I'm not sure, but his proposal was for a $1.9 trillion stimulus package. You know, on slide 11, we have the bullet points that would be contained, at least in his proposal. Eligible Americans would receive an additional 1,400 in stimulus checks on top of the 600 they're getting, so that would be 2,000 in total. It extends unemployment insurance supplement from the feds through September and, you know, various, you know, the various aspects of this program, certainly a big component is the vaccination program. You know, at the bottom here, we do provide numbers again from his proposal, between 130 and 170 billion for schools. So let's, retracing this, CARES Act ESER was 13 billion, CARES Act two is 54 billion. This is 130 to 170 billion. But again, this is a proposal. Another 35 billion to higher education, and importantly, because CARES Act two kind of left out local and state government, there is a proposal to provide 350 billion to state, local and territorial governments. And so that would significantly help to shore up the state's budget as well as cities and counties in the state. But again, this is, you know, on paper right now, and I don't think there's been much progress on this legislation quite yet, so we'll see where this ends up. But we did want to sprinkle in some good news for you in this budget presentation. So there it was. Any questions? Okay, on to our update on state funding. Jeff and I'll kind of co-present on this. Jeff, certainly feel free to pop in. So Governor released his budget, I think it was Tuesday night, might have been Wednesday morning. It's all foggy now, but this was just last week. The total two-year state budget was just under 8.7 billion, which was a 2% reduction over the current biennium. And there, you know, there is an increase in federal funding. And again, we are digging through this, and I, I think what you'll see here overall, just to give an overall statement, is this budget contains reductions to K through 12. Make no mistake about it. It contains reductions to nearly every function of the state, again, because state revenues are down compared to the pre-COVID biennial budget. And so, you know, as a kind of a high-level commentary, I would say it is not a question of if K through 12 was to receive less funding or be cut, it's just a question of how much. Again, we'll see what the legislature does. Last year, they came through and allocated marijuana funding to schools, and so that added funding. But in terms of the state general funds portion of K through 12 funding, as you can see in that second bullet point on slide 13, second sub-bullet point under the second bullet point, K through 12 funding is declining 350 million from the governor's proposed budget from the last biennium, which is the current biennium. So current biennium, pre-COVID, that K through 12 budget was $346 million higher than the proposed K through 12 budget for the upcoming biennium. You know, the budget contains funding for step increases. These are your merit increases or step increases as you go through a salary range in both years. It includes health insurance inflation, it includes covering school districts for the PERS rate retirement increase that's going to happen. It does not provide funding for any cost of living adjustment for teachers or other school district employees. But even all that being said, if you're getting cut, it's kind of tough to reconcile the fact that you're being told you're being funded for step increases and health insurance, right, when overall you're being cut. So, you know, take it for what it is, that's the statement in the budget document, and then it assumes relatively flat student enrollment. So as we talked about, we were headed and being, in preparing ourselves and doing all the analysis based on current state law that says, you'll remember from December, that the pupil-centered funding plan will be implemented on July 1st of 2021. So that's current law, Senate Bill 543, that says the new pupil-centered funding plan will take effect on July 1, i.e. in fiscal year 22. Last week in the state of the state, and in the budget highlights, we saw that the governor has now proposed a shift in the pupil-centered funding plan so that it will be a phased implementation over the next two bienniums, or in other words, the next four years. And so this is incredibly complicated. There are lots of questions from school district CFO staff and superintendents, interested stakeholders, legislators and so forth. There was a legislative commission meeting, I think I mentioned, on Friday, in which the state provided some numbers for the pupil-centered funding plan, but again, lots of questions from that legislative commission, and some of the answers weren't helpful to, so far at this point, to help us really divine what's going on. But we provided the slide on, we provided the slide on slide 14 here to kind of try to show you this transitioned proposal for the pupil-centered funding plan, what happens next biennium, and then what happens the following biennium as proposed by the governor. So one of the key aspects of the pupil-centered funding plan, you will remember, is the replacement of categorical funding, so all the different categorical funding programs that exist in the state, like Victory, Zoom, SB 178 at-risk funding, all of that will now become part of weighted funding, and that was in the pupil-centered funding plan. It'll institutionalize or stabilize that funding. That is proposed to happen next biennium, so there's no change there. Those programs will be folded into the weights and then allocated to school districts based on the new pupil-centered funding model. Another huge change to state funding of school districts that was contained in the pupil-centered funding plan was that the SB 543 directed that all local revenues, and when we say that, we primarily mean property taxes for the operating side, local school support tax or sales tax, and the government services tax, the operating piece. The intention was that all would go to the state. We wouldn't see a dime of it go through our coffers, and then that would be pulled together and reallocated to the districts based on, again, the new pupil-centered funding model. That is the key piece that is being deferred here. So the governor's proposal is for school districts to retain that local funding, and so if the legislature approved that, then we would keep our property tax, sales tax, government services tax, and franchise fees collected in Washoe County. So that's a significant change in the phasing of the new pupil-centered funding plan. And that's created a lot of questions about how that works with two-thirds of our funding being local will now be under the old Nevada plan, and then one-third of the state funding will be under the new pupil-centered funding plan. And they have, you know, there's different adjustments there, and so there's lots of concern and questions about how that will work. Another key component of the pupil-centered funding plan was that it changes the equity adjustments that are made to fund school districts to try to balance out school districts with less resources or smaller school districts that don't have the economies of scale we do, so that they would get more. And importantly, that includes the nefarious cost of living or cost of wages index that we've talked about before. That will, the way it's been explained to us, and again, I think there's going to be lots of questions about this, those adjustments will apply to the state funding we receive, but we are being told they would not apply to the local funding we receive. So that's what we're being told. We're going to operate on that basis until we hear otherwise.
If I may, Mark, is that for this biennium or-
Yes, just for this biennium. And then the second biennium, i.e. three to four years from now, in that second biennium, all of our funding would go through these equity adjustments in the model. Yes, thank you for the question.
Okay.
So it's very complex. It kind of changes everything in terms of what our preliminary budget estimate would have been. There will be, as we understand, a state education account and stabilization account created next biennium, and we are being told funding for schools will be retained in that account. So the idea for the first time is instead of, if there are additional revenues that come in from school taxes or other dedicated school revenues before, those taxes and revenues above and beyond what were budgeted just went back to the state. The pupil-centered funding plan said they should stay in a state education fund and be preserved for state funding of K through 12. We are told that will happen next biennium. Going back through, going through the slide, there is no, in the current biennium, they are not linking, as we understand it, and this could be clarified later, but they are not linking the revenue growth of the state with funding for K through 12. So that was another important component of the pupil-centered funding plan. The law says that when the economic forum projects a certain rate of increase of state general fund revenues, schools should get the same rate of increase for the state's general fund piece of K through 12 funding. We understand that is not the case in the current biennium. We are unsure as to how student-centered funding and reporting will work. That really hasn't been discussed much at all. We have been told or heard at Friday's legislative commission that the per pupil guarantee that was slated to go away will in fact go away in the next biennium. So again, if there is a revenue shortfall or decrease based on whatever external event may happen, it's on us to make that up. The state won't make that up, which is all the reason to have a sufficient fund balance to cover those kind of scenarios. So that's, in a nutshell, the governor's proposal as we understand it today. And again, that's based on very limited discussions and information from the state. They are working hard to put the documents together to explain this to us, and we will talk about it at the Commission on School Funding meeting next Thursday and Friday. So that's where the CFOs will really start grilling the state about what this all means. So this is the best snapshot we have at the moment, and hopefully it'll be clarified at least to some degree over the next two weeks.
Trustee Cottle?
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks, Mark. I know this is a lot of information you've given us without having a lot of answers to your questions. So to my understanding, the state is going to match education funding at this, from this, at the state level? So what happens if local revenues are less? That is just, it is what it is? They're not going to match the local side of this, now that they're separating it for two years?
That's how I interpret it, yes.
Okay. And so from our perspective, there's a chance we could at least see some benefit from having locals separate, because our local revenue, at least in Washoe, has not really taken the significant hit due to COVID like Clark, so we might actually be able to weather this transition maybe better than other school districts. Is that how you understand it too?
Yeah, I mean, I would say you're correct that in Washoe County, we've seen growth of those local revenues. So sales taxes up 5% in Washoe fiscal year-to-date, that's since July 1. Property taxes are roughly up the same amount. So under this phased implementation, we would see some, I would expect us, I don't have a crystal ball, but I would expect without, you know, a deeper recession happening, growth in our local revenues. What's really kind of unclear is whether the state's kind of taken that into account in terms of determining their state funding for Washoe County School Districts. So we need to have that discussion with them, because that's normally how this works, right? There's this, there's this pretense that it's separated, and they really are analyzing and projecting what our local revenues are going to be in order to determine the state amount of funding. So again, it's very murky how this will work, being half under the Nevada plan and half under the pupil-centered funding.
Thank you. My last question is, and we had this discussion in the fall with the Nevada plan, the old model is that enrollment matters, and if enrollment goes down, they're going to take money from you in the school, in the middle of the school year. So in this hybrid model where half of it's Nevada plan, half of it's not, how does our enrollment impact what we're going to receive, whether, because if we get an enrollment bounce, because those kindergarteners return, students that left, families that left due to COVID return, will we see a benefit? Or do you think that enrollment's not going to play as big of a role going forward as it had been in the past?
So under the pupil-centered funding plan, you know, if that were to be fully implemented, and again, just to reiterate, that is the law. That's the law of the land, and it has to be changed in order for it to be changed. But under the pupil-centered funding plan, based on the last four months results of models we'd seen, we were held in a, we were in a hold harmless situation where we were going to be frozen at fiscal year 20 funding, and it didn't matter what enrollment did. There was no new funding for step increases. There was no new funding for COLAs for teachers. It didn't matter what enrollment did. You were frozen at fiscal year 20 funding levels regardless of all those things happening. I guess to not answer your question, maybe, it's just a little too early, I think, for us to completely answer that question. There was some information provided on Friday that kind of threw us a curveball, indicating we may not be in a hold harmless situation for the state's portion of funding. So we have to dig through that and hope to get you an answer next month on that. I don't have really a solid answer I can give you today.
No, I can appreciate that. It's just so interesting that we are going to essentially have two competing rules in different programs, because the rules in many cases, such as the enrollment numbers, the rules for each plan compete with each other. They fight against each other, and so it's interesting, and obviously without that information, that's tough, because if we see that enrollment bounce back with all those kindergarteners showing up and we're frozen at what we are now, we're frozen at 62,000 students, whereas we might have, what if we get back to 64? That's going to be an issue. And so that, I hope that we can get that. Hopefully, there's some flexibility if we do the hybrid plan to try to recover a little bit, because I think, I don't understand why it wouldn't be somewhat understood that enrollment decreases in many cases were subject to COVID.
Yep.
In other words, temporary.
Yep.
And so we're not going to be the only ones in the state facing that. So that's, that's a big, that's a big answer that we need to plan going forward. So I can appreciate the position you're in, it's just, we all want to know right now.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. I mean, that's an example of a question that I think is an implication of this phased-in approach that probably hasn't- approach that probably hasn't been thought completely through. And so the ultimate answer about how that will work may be yet to come. I mean, we may get an initial question, and then as the Commission on School Funding and as the legislature deals with it, they may come up with a completely different recommended model for a phase-in. It may look completely different, but, so, stay tuned, is what I would say. So the next two slides just basically go through.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mathers.
I'm sorry.
Just really quick. So to that point, there's been a lot of conversation because other districts, right, they're not quite sure where their local revenues are going to be coming in. And so we know that that's, that's an extreme concern as well, too, to get those answers. And then the enrollment part, when we were on the call with the state, you know, the governor's finance office is kind of heading this up right now, and they are being exceptionally conservative on their enrollment projections going into this, this next year. But I mean, those are all significant concerns for other superintendents as well, too, across the state. I appreciate that question, though.
So slides 15 and 16 basically just verbally go through what we've been talking about, and that lines out by biennium, you know, what happens in each biennium. On slide 17, we cover some other aspects of the governor's recommended budget. Pre-K funding was restored to fiscal year 20 funding levels, as was Senate Bill 178. Remember, Senate Bill 178 was completely eliminated in the special session of last year. So that funding is restored, and we'd be part of the at-risk weight. Adult education has also been restored to fiscal year 20 funding levels. And their, you know, read by grade three and class size reduction will be transitioned as part of our base funding. So we'll get that as part of our base funding now, and there's lots of questions involved in that that we'll talk about in a second. So the next four slides, beginning on slide 18, provide some very summary statewide information. And I have to caution everyone, this is statewide-level information. We don't know how this is going to be distributed and allocated to each school district. So it would not be correct to assume, oh, state, on a statewide basis, funding is flat, therefore, we will be flat. We might not be flat. So I just, I just want to caution you in terms of how you might interpret this information. But, you know, it is important for you to see, at least, you know, in this, in this month, kind of where things stand and what is proposed. And so this is our base funding, and you can see some components of base funding from prior, prior years that will now be folded into base funding. But you can see in fiscal year 20, on a statewide basis, roughly 1.65 billion was provided as base funding to districts that goes into our general fund. And in fiscal year 22, that drops to less than 1.5 billion. So that's, you know, a significant drop. And then you can see in fiscal year 22, 23, again, state, statewide base funding is, is budgeted to go down. And we see this very often, that the second year of the biennium funding actually decreases. And again, the state's been in this position in their playbook as, well, you have local revenue growth in the second year of the biennium, so we don't need to fund you as much. And so we go back to some of the graphs we've shown you over the years that show the percentage of the state's general fund budget that goes to K through 12 keeps dropping. It's being offset by local revenues, but it keeps dropping such that 40% of the state's general fund budget used to go to K through 12, and now it's closer to 33%. And that represents hundreds of millions of dollars. So this is consistent with past practice. And so we just want to share, again, on a statewide level, what's going on. Hopefully, that makes sense. Well, you don't like it. I didn't say you had to like it, but hopefully. On slide 19, we talk, these are categorical grants that are now in base funding. So this, this gets tricky, right? But here are all the programs that existed under the Nevada plan as categorical grants that will now become part of our base funding. One of the most significant questions we have, I'll just take one line item, funding for social workers. That will now be part of our base funding. How much flexibility will we have? It used to be a former categorical grant, so the state specified how we could use it. So the question's going to be, okay, it's part of base funding, and really, part of the pupil-centered funding plan's principles is increased flexibility for school districts. So how flexible are, would we be to use that money? Is it going to be like AB 309 in the current biennium where we had a lot of flexibility about how to use former categorical funding? And that was really helpful to solve our budget deficit in fiscal year 20. Is it going to be like that? Or there's still going to be strings attached to this money? So that's a really significant issue and question that we'll have at the Commission on School Funding, and the legislature's already gone down this road and asked these kind of questions at the Legislative Commission. So that's huge. Next slide is weighted funding. And we didn't break them out between the three weights of English learners, gifted and talented and at-risk, but you see in total, there's a slight increase in funding, and that's good. So again, I would caution you, the methodology for allocating these dollars will be different under pupil-centered funding plan than it was under the Nevada plan. So you can't make a straight-line correlation to say, well, funding is the same each year, so our amount of funding will be the same. And part of the reason for that is the pupil-centered funding plan says that when you have a student who hits more than one weight, they will only get the biggest weight. So if you have a special education student who's also an English learner, we will only get special education funding for that student. That student will be excluded from the enrollment count under English learners. So he or she won't be counted as an English learner in terms of distributing this weighted funding. So it, it does change the enrollment numbers. We will ask, what enrollment numbers is the state planning on using to make these distributions so that we can get a better feel for how, how much we will receive? But it is a change from the Nevada plan where each categorical grant, where it's completely standalone and, you know, a gifted and talented student would be what you would consider a gifted and talented student. Now, if you have an English learner, gifted and talented student, they're going to get the English learner funding, but not the gifted and talented funding.
If I may on that, but we're still going to provide the services for that child in both of those categories.
Correct.
Because they still need GT services and SPED services, or they still need GT services and Zoom, sir, or whatever the case may be.
Yep.
But we don't have the, we won't get the resources to provide that to little Angie who might need two things, but we're, okay.
That's exactly right.
Yes, I see. Trustee Thakkar and then Trustee Nicolet.
Just a quick question, and this was something I received. I know we're going to have to discuss this in our board meeting. This is something I received from someone as well who was looking into these numbers for GT. You know, we see it being restored in fiscal year 2022. Help me understand how we can explain the cuts we may, may have to make when it appears that the funding formula for that is restored to what it was in fiscal year 20?
Well, I think, I think we need to have a deeper discussion on that on the agenda items on the regular agenda tonight. I wouldn't characterize them all as cuts. A lot of them are operational efficiencies and using a different model to provide delivery of services. So I wouldn't call those cuts. Again, the reality is, this is what's in the proposed budget. The legislature cut significantly gifted and talented in the special session. They could choose to do that again. I mean, it kind of begs the question, why did they do that in the special session and then we're restoring it back in '22? So I, I mean, I'm just asking a question. I don't have any inside information to know how the legislature feels about these programs, but that is, first, that is a possibility. You know, the second facet of this is that the Washoe County School District has used its general funds or base funding to support a lot of these programs. And it's going to be questionable as to whether you can use base funding that's intended for every student of the district and allocate part of that for a special program. So that's another facet of this that kind of gets lost. So I hope that helps, but I think we'll have further discussion tonight on it.
Of course. And I think part of your answer did help me understand a little better that these allocations from the state tend to yo-yo a little bit. And so we, as a district, have to think of like, how, how can we handle this ourselves considering that, as you said, the legislature may do whatever they want, right?
Yeah. The, you know, another good aspect of the pupil-centered funding plan, it says in law that the intention is the current effective weight of funding, and I don't want to get into technicalities, but there's mathematical calculation of the coefficient for the target funding. Okay, that, that was pretty technical, but anyhow.
Yeah, you lost, timeout.
So let's say, English learners, I don't remember the numbers, Kristin, but English learners say is at .3. So basically, the state is funding English learners to say, you get an extra 30% of funding to provide English learner students with, with supports, right? So you get your base funding for that English learner student, and then you get an extra 30% for additional services. The SB 543 says that coefficient, that .3, should never go down. Now, that's an intention. It's not a legal requirement. But, but once we're into the pupil-centered funding plan, if the state kind of holds true to that intention, then we should see ever-increasing amounts of funding for weighted categories of students until we reach that target weight, the aspirational target weight. I don't know if I lost focus on that, but anyhow, I'll not talk about coefficients anymore tonight.
Thank you. Dr. McNeil, do you want to respond to that? And then we'll go to Dr. Nicolet.
Yeah, absolutely. So just really quickly, this is also under the consideration that we still must, right, follow all federal compliance guidelines under ESEA 2. So that's with special education, EL exiting, EL students. We still have to track students once they're exited from EL for four years, I think, for four years after they're exited English languages, and that's by federal. So there are still some federal, you know, laws that we must make sure that we're keeping up to.
Thank you, Dr. McNeil. We'll go to Dr. Nicolet, then Trustee Church, and then Trustee Calvert.
And if I'm getting ahead, let me know because I can, I can be patient.
Okay.
The pure per pupil funding, the weighted portion, those dollars follow the student, correct? So, and I'm not looking for an answer, just tell me if, and when I'm thinking about this, I'm correct. So when we think about student shifting, for whatever reason, then we also have to be prepared in our schools for those shifts.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Trustee Church?
Okay, I am relatively confused, but I think this is probably one of the most important slides, 18 to 20. So let's go back to slide 18, the 17% cut statewide in funding. Now, just remind me again, FY '21, that's July of 2020, that's coming up in about six months.
No.
Oh.
We're in July.
We're in July. So that started July of 2020.
Right.
Okay, got it. Now my brain is fixed to that. So the, so I really need to be looking more towards FY '22 for what's going to happen in six months. Okay.
That's right.
That, that changes a lot of things. And then the page 18, and 20, rather, gate, that's significant for us to tell people later. That's 8 million statewide, or that's 8 million school district?
Sadly, that's 8 million statewide.
That's statewide cut, so ours are going to be different. And then again, on the, the page 18, so we're already taking 17% cuts statewide, not school district. And like Mr. Cudell said, we're probably looking a little better school district, correct? A little better than that 17% cut?
So fiscal year '21, the numbers there reflect the special session cuts that were made. Those are adjusted numbers. Those weren't the original budget, but those reflect the special session cuts that were made. And we do provide a note on note four that because of shortfalls in funding, I guess, so this, again, this is how the Nevada plan works. The Nevada plan provides for a guaranteed per pupil funding for each school district because other areas of the state are seeing, you know, pretty devastating economic conditions. The state will have to up those appropriations by, at least in the state budget, indicates 331 million to cover shortfalls in sales tax in other parts of the state and so forth. So.
You say they have to. What does that mean?
They statutorily have to cover any shortfall of sales tax under the current Nevada plan that we might see. So, you know, it's statutory. I mean, they could, and they have during the Great Recession, they passed a statute saying, never mind. But in current statutes, they have to guarantee that per pupil funding. So if there is a reduction of another local revenue, they have to make it up, and that amounts to roughly $330 million. So.
But that's in the current Nevada plan, correct? That's not in the.
Right.
Right, okay.
Right.
You get on that, Trustee Church? Okay, yeah, that's, welcome. So you want to follow up on that? Or do we, okay, go ahead, Trustee Calvert, and then we'll jump across to Trustee Calvert.
Yeah, I think, I think what Mark is talking about is so important for us because while the legislature could always get around, they have to. In the new plan, that, that have to is gone. So in poor economic times, as a board, we have to make sure that our fund balance is healthy enough to withstand those years, just like a county government would. Now, their flexibility is still more because they might be able to put money away. If we ever said, hey, we're going to put money away, that would probably not be taken very well. But I think that's really key in this discussion and our budget going forward is if we deplete our fund balance, there is no, I mean, that, that is the helpline. There's no helpline after that. And I know Clark County School District has been in that position. We're on their, I think they're still on the watch list, whereas we have, through, through years of boards being aware of that with board policy to 8% to 10% for fund balance, we've really done our work to avoid those situations as much as possible. I think going forward, that work, the reward will be going forward, that we're in a better position for that kind of a plan. But it's something we have to keep in the back of our minds. Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah, that's a very good point, Mr. Vice President. Are we following up on that, Trustee Church? Or we're going over to Trustee Calvert?
Yeah, I'll hold.
Okay, we'll get back to you, Trustee Calvert. Then we'll jump over to your Trustee Church.
Anyway, I just really wanted, Mr. Mathers, if you could clarify a little bit more about what Angie said about resources and how those are allocated when, like you said, an EL person has one, and then they have possibly something else. If you could just give me a little bit more understanding on that, please.
Yeah. And I, if I'm not explaining this well, please just ask me to explain it again because I do want to answer your questions. Under the Nevada plan, special education is funded and distributed completely separately and on a standalone basis versus English learners versus gifted and talented. So in the current Nevada plan, we might receive funding for both if there's a student in two or more categories. Under the pupil-centered funding plan, that is not the case. The student receives the highest weight. And so if they're special ed and English learners, right, they would get special education funding from the state, but we would not get English learner funding for that student. They would be excluded from the enrollment count of English learners. And the point the president was making is, yes, but we still have to provide English learner services and special ed services to that child who's in both categories. And that's absolutely right. We would have to do that. We're just going, the law was written such that you get the highest weight, not, not both weights.
Well, and I would add, it, it isn't just that we have to, we want to.
Yes.
Right? We want to give the student that support because they need that support to be successful, and that's, that's the business that we're in. So we aren't going to cheat that child.
Right.
But that's back to what Vice President Calvert was saying in terms of having fund balance, that's back to part of the point, I think, that you're making too, Mr. Mathers, is those are dollars that then we end up having to make up from the general fund because we aren't going to turn our back on the kid and say, well, we're only going to support this part of your need. We aren't going to support this part of your need. Okay, so now we go, Trustee Church, you were.
A quick comment, if it matters. The CLGF meets January 28, and Clark County is on the hot seat for that evaluation in case we care to watch it or whatever. And my big question, it's probably one you're going to answer at the very end of the presentation, is there anything that you recommend we have to do now?
That will come at the end.
But how about we hold that? If you, if we will, if we, Trustee Church, we'll hold that for the end so it's out there, and so we know we'll make sure we'll look back to it. That's our Dr. Nicolet, and then Vice President Calvert.
Thank you, President Taylor. So those three categories, at-risk, GT, EL, what's the other category? As you know, the, what's the best word to use? The student that doesn't fall into any of those categories?
That's what base funding is for.
That's still the base, but is that weighted per pupil or no? That's just the base funding?
Yeah, so every student in the district.
That's the 1.0. That's the one point oh, yeah.
Regardless of their, if they're overweight or not, or going, should get the same, roughly, the same amount of funding per student. Um, and, and that's, you know, the intention of SB five forty-three. And then for those in a weight, they get the additional funding to provide those additional supports. But every student, all sixty-two thousand currently of our students, should receive base funding, and the reporting should track by school, how much base funding per student there was.
And I will add, when you say SB five forty-three, that is what he's referring to, the, the pupil-based, pupil-centered, what is it called?
Pupil-centered funding.
Pupil-centered funding. That's replacing the Nevada plan. The Nevada plan is how we fund now, just to make sure we don't lose anyone in our transition.
Yes.
Right? And then, like you said, there's special ed, there's low income, there's ELL, there's gifted and talented, those are funds that we would get in addition to, which that, now that's, that's going away.
The child, the child will receive in addition to.
Right. When I say we, it's for us to provide the services to the child, but the child will only get one of those. If that child falls into both, two categories.
Right.
We will, we're still only going to get the funding to provide the services for one, although we'll still find a way to provide the others, because that's what we do, right? Vice President Cottle, then come right back over here to Trustee Bigpin.
Thank you, Madam President, and to, to build on, on that, um, that, those comments, Trustee Nicolet, is the, with the funding following the student, it impacts the services within that school, because one year there might be a high number of EL, the next year maybe not so much, so that will be a shift for, for our district. And this question might be for, for Ben Hayes, maybe you can just give me a thumbs up. So for the category, for this type of funding, with the funding following the student, is it your department that's going to monitor what services each student gets to make sure the proper weights are applied to every student in every school? And then if they have two, they get the highest? It feels like that's going to be a lot of monitoring, uh, for, for your department. I just want to see if you can give some comments on that.
I thank you, Ben Hayes, for the record. Uh, the state with the, since we've gone to statewide infinite campus, they're able to kind of monitor as we go. There's definitely some reporting, certainly from the business office and certainly from our office, but it won't be all of us chasing it down to figure it out. There will be some reporting on how did you serve these kids, et cetera. I should make the point real quick, too, that it does follow the student, but it's impossible to follow, follow student literally, because they'll make, for instance, this next fiscal year, they're probably, year, they'll probably make estimates or do the count based on two years ago tests, um, for English learners and smarter balance for at-risk. So they do it at the best they can, and then we report it the best they can with kind of some noise in there, if that makes sense.
No, I, I appreciate that. And then your office will monitor the, uh, the auditing of that, because then the part of the bill, the state is going to make sure our school districts are spending the weights on those services. Do you monitor that?
We will, so we'll work with the business office to, just like we do for class size, uh, to report those numbers and to monitor it. And then we have, as Dr. McNeil said earlier, obligations to monitor federal perfor, uh, performance, student outcomes, and that kind of thing. So, yeah, no matter what the, the pupil funding that the child gets, we're still, we count them as part of our groups that we serve, as Dr. Taylor said.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Cottle. Trustee Bigpin?
Um, yeah, and as, as we've been talking and asking questions, the picture's becoming a bit more clear for me, so I appreciate that. Um, so my thought is, and, and this is in, in talking with constituents later on, um, from my understanding, as you said, the student is going to receive a weighted fund. We don't know which weight that's going to be until enrollments come in, right? So that's why we need to get ready and have our financial house in order, so that we don't have to dip into the general fund as much as, as we need to. And if we have to, because as, as President Taylor has said, we will certainly take care of our students, but we just don't know what we don't know until enrollment, right?
That's right. Certainly, one of our questions is, you know, what will be the enrollment date, enrollment data that the state uses to make distributions? Again, in this blended phased version, how will that work? And, and going back to the question of reporting, which Trustee Cottle, Vice President Cottle very astutely pointed out, I don't know how reporting will work in a half Nevada plan, half people-centered funding plan version. That, to me, makes sense to phase that in, um, but we, we will see.
If I may jump in there.
Thank you, please.
For the record, Jeff Boszo, Budget Director, uh, Trustee Bigpin. Uh, you know, one thing we will be doing is using projected enrollment to try to see where we think these students are going to be, and distribute allocations and plan to provide services at those, oh, sorry, uh, try to, uh, project where, which schools we're going to be providing those services to, uh, so that we can best be prepared and then when.
I'm going to interrupt you for just a moment. Jeff, can you get a little closer to the mic, so we can hear you no more? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, it is. Thank you very much.
So, we'll plan, uh, to provide services at schools where we think the students are going to be at, and then, you know, throughout the summer, we'll monitor enrollment like we have done in years past. And then, when school opens and we see where these students actually end up, then we'll adjust allocations and our plans to provide services as necessary.
And that's why we need to have a healthy general fund, so that there's no surprises, essentially, if we have to shift later on, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Trustee. Okay, thank you. Good, robust conversation. Back to you, Mr. Mathers. Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, the last slide on weighted funding, on slide twenty-one, um, takes a look at states, statewide special education funding, and I'm happy to say there are some modest increases in funding that reflects, uh, enrollment growth and inflation growth. So, that's, that's a good thing to see. Um, however, it still should be noted that the Washoe County School District bears the greatest portion of special education funding, over and above what the state provides or what the federal government provides. So, um, they, we, we still provide, like I say, the greatest portion of that, and that won't change under this state budget. So, concluding this section on slide twenty-two, then, um, you know, the good news is, we have avoided the feared twelve percent cuts. The state was modeling and doing scenario building late last year. Um, however, base funding certainly has decreased, um, and it decreases again in fiscal year twenty-three, as we've shown you. Um, and as all of your questions indicate, there are many, many questions, um, that we have, and that all other school districts have, in terms of the implementation of a phased plan. And so I think it is really safe to say, as those questions are answered, this may mutate and evolve between now and June. Um, and, and, and so you've, you've identified a number of them that we had, and, and there will be more, for sure. Um, you know, as we've talked about, Senate Bill five forty-three is the law of the land, so it will need to be adjusted in order to accommodate any phase in of the people-centered funding plan. So, it's a, kind of a, a way to say, the legislature will have their say in, in how this does evolve and how it might ultimately look, which again, you know, points out the challenges of preparing a, a school district budget in a legislative year. A lot of these changes may not happen until the end of May, and our budget is due June eighth. Our final budget's due June eighth. Now, we have thirty days after the session ends, ends to provide amended budget, but thirty days isn't very long, when you consider open meeting law, noticing requirements and so forth. So, it's going to be challenging. Um, uh, again, fortunately, there is federal stimulus funding that can help buffer us to some extent. But, um, before I turn it over to Jeff to talk about our own budget, um, you know, just the last bullet point is, there is a huge amount of analysis that's going to be needed here, to track how the people-centered funding plan, half of this works, and how the Nevada plan, half of this works, along with all the operational questions you've identified, along with the reporting questions that exist. So, you know, just bear with us. Again, we'll be coming to you monthly to update you and give you, at that moment in time, where we think we are. But it, again, for new trustees, you know, it's stressful, and it's confusing, and we get that. And that's just how it works when there's, when the, in a legislative year. There's no getting around it under current law. So, just, just again, hang with us. This will become clearer over time, and we will get to a number that you can absorb and that we can talk about. So, we've covered state and federal funding over the first hour, hour and a half of this. Now, we're going to turn internally to how we prepare our budget, and what we'll be doing over the next six months, and I'm going to turn it over then to, to Jeff Boszo, our Budget Director.
Just before we jump to, uh, to Jeff, is there any more questions on that piece? We, you know, we've heard about CARES funding, and we're hopeful about future CARES funding, and what that may mean, and the best look we can get at the current state situation. And it's, it's still muddy, but it sounds like it's going to be muddy, and we aren't alone in the mud, so. I don't, I don't know if that's good or bad, but, you know, we can just lock our arms and be in the mud together for a while. And then now we go to our own. Thank you very much. Jeff, thank you.
Sorry. Everyone can hear me this time? Yeah, perfect. Okay. Uh, so for the record, Jeff Boszo, Budget Director, I'm going to walk you through, um, the preliminary budget outlook for the general fund, starting with how we build our general fund budget. Uh, so, the first thing we start off is with expenditures. So, we compare our prior year's budget to an updated snapshot of all of our positions, whether they're filled or vacant. We take a snapshot, we run it through a model that calculates the total cost associated with every single position. And it gets down to the detail of, you know, the actual salary of the position, or the person in that position, and their associated benefits. Uh, comparing that to the prior year's budget, there's typically two or three million dollars of savings there, and that's turnover savings, uh, and that's something we see on an annual basis. So, a teacher retires, or so on, leaves a district, their replacement is typically at a lower cost. So we adjust for that. Then, we make further salary and benefit adjustments. So, as Mark talked about, the state budget's the two percent, a step increase, well, we have step increases here, too, so we roll those employees up on the salary schedule for their step increase. Uh, we apply benefit changes, so if there's a pers increase, like there is this biennium, a health insurance increase, life insurance increase, any other benefit changes, we apply those as well. For non-salary and benefit budgets, we'll make adjustments for, you know, do we have anticipated contract increases? You know, we have multi-year contracts, so does it go up ten thousand dollars one year from the next? Um, or something like a lease? We have leased properties, do we know that those costs are going to increase each year? After that, we do a review of historical spending patterns. So we do a line-by-line analysis. We go through everything you see in here for the general fund and special ed and other funds by full detail, and analyze if there's any historical savings there. If there is, we'll work with departments to make reductions in those budgets, so we don't have to make reductions in other places. To continue, we review nondiscretionary and district-wide costs, so we have a utilities budget, um, all district utility costs come into one account, and so we analyze that from year to year. Uh, we also have chargebacks for things like our print shop or mail services, our remodel department, so we take a look at those and make sure we're accounting for those properly. And then we also have internal service funds, so our property and casualty fund, our workers' comp fund, and our health insurance fund. Any changes in those that would require a rate increase have an impact on the general fund, because whether it's through a health insurance contribution, on behalf of, of an employee, uh, the workers' comp contribution, or the property and casualty premium we pay out of the general fund, then we'll have cost increases there as well. Further, uh, we work with departments to go through all of their positions. We review any vacant positions that the department may have. We talk to them about any reorganizations they're contemplating, to see if any of those will result in, uh, any efficiencies or savings there. We also go through the allocation process I mentioned a few minutes ago, where we put projected enrollment through an allocations database. It runs through all of our district ratios and spits out school allocations, and, you know, we compare that to make sure that what's in the budget lines up with those projected allocations. And then finally, we have a category here for major cost reductions. So if you recall, a few years ago, we went through what was called priorities-based budgeting, where we identified district programs and their costs, and put them through, uh, ranked them through several different types of criteria, which resulted in, you know, a priority order of programs. Not to say things are a low priority here, but of all the programs we're doing, which ones are the highest priority to, uh, the lowest in four rankings, so one being the highest to four. We also looked at, uh, those programs from a, are they mandated level? So, if the program was mandated, well, we need to continue doing it. If it's not mandated, or has a low mandate level, can we reduce the time and effort we're putting there to help with some sort of savings or efficiencies? And then, uh, from a central service perspective, we've spent many years trying not to have cuts at the school level, or have cuts directly impact schools, so we've made reductions at the central service level. So we also provide, uh, departments provide analysis on, okay, if we were to cut further, what would that result in, and that would be a service-level reduction. Any questions there? Uh, so moving on to slide twenty-five, uh, this is just the detail that we just went over. So, updating the salary and benefits, comparing our budgets on a line-by-line ba, basis to prior year actuals, adjusting for any contractual increases, and, you know, reviewing our utilities and other costs there. Moving to slide twenty-six, just goes through the details of the position review, the allocation for general ed, special ed, gifted and talented, our EL programming, um, and then a review of the priority-based cost reductions, service-level reductions, and then reviewing any older initiatives we may have taken on, or any pilot programs which are ending the, the time of being a Moving on to the next slide, um, this is the, how do we build our general fund budget revenue portion? So, under the old Nevada plan, we would look at, you know, do our own projections based on trend analysis for property tax revenues, local school support tax, or sales tax revenue, the government services tax revenue, and then also, you know, project based on the governor's budget, what we thought our per pupil amount was going to be, and get all that data and work it back into, you know, what is our DSA, uh, per pupil guarantee amount going to be? We also look at other, other adjustments, so do we have, and we have other small, uh, local revenues, like, uh, you know, facility rental fees, things like that. We'd adjust those based on prior year trends, and then, do we have any grants that are ending, any new ones that are coming on? Uh, so we'd make adjustments like that. And then, as Mark alluded to earlier, we typically don't see our per pupil numbers until the end of the legislative session, so then we would make adjustments after the, after we get those numbers, and then we'd have thirty days after the legislative session ends to adopt an amended final budget. So going over here to the next column, uh, if, under the full implementation of the people-centered funding plan, all those local revenues would go into the people-centered funding plan, run through that, that model, and then we'd have base and weighted per pupil funding for the categories we talked about before. And then we would assume, again, that we might not get all the details or final numbers until the end of the legislative session. Any questions there? All right. So moving on to slide twenty-eight, again, this is just giving the detail that, that we walked through in slide twenty-seven. So moving on to slide twenty-nine, this is the point of the presentation, where we would typically give you, uh, an estimate of our general fund surplus or deficit. Um, but, all the things we talked about with this phased-in funding approach, there's still a lot of unknowns that we need to work through before we can figure out what the actual impact to our general fund is going to be. Hopefully, we'll have some more clarification after the school commission on funding next week, and then we hope to provide an estimate to you all on February twenty-third during our next work session.
I think we're, we've, we've gone. I think we're, we've gone through that. Jeff, Dr. McNeil?
So just really quick. So, and there's always the possibility, not that we ever want this to happen, but it has happened before where the legislation doesn't end, the legislator doesn't end on the date that they say that they're going to end and they extend that. And that has a tremendous impact on school districts on trying to get this information out to you. So just know that that's always a possibility. It is not something that I don't think anyone in the state ever wants because it's extremely expensive, but that has happened in the past.
Thank you, Dr. McNeil. That's, that's very much so, very much so. Hopefully, it won't, but that will be the only exception to the information that we're getting now. Okay. Thank you, Jeff.
All right. Thank you. I will move on to slide 30 and discuss our working assumptions for the FY22 budget. Uh, so as we talked about before, we're gonna, as we've done in prior years, assume that enrollment remains flat, but we expect to see some of those kindergartners who may have stayed home, done homeschool, or done preschool for another year come back to the district. Uh, there's also the fact that Coral Academy is building a second elementary school with a capacity of up to 325 students that in coming years could expand to 500 students. So we also have to be ready for that impact as well. We're also assuming that we will have relaxed social distancing requirements compared to what we have now. What this allows us to do is use our current school allocation model. So our, our current student-to-teacher ratios and not make adjustments for, okay, well, we have to have smaller class sizes because of social distancing requirements. We, we also have the new Michael Inskie Elementary School coming on board. That'll have additional costs. We have, um, you know, the teacher allocations, those follow the students. So additional fixed costs we have when we open a new school are principal, uh, if there's enrollment that justifies a dean or assistant principal. We have counseling allocations, uh, other office staff like secretary, clerical aide, and custodial and maintenance staff at those schools. And then the last bullet here, you'll hear more on this later this evening, um, but the proposal for distance learning to be centralized. So through an expansion in North Star, we're assuming the enrollment there is 2,000 students. Um, so if that increases or decreases from that number, what, what the actual enrollment is, then the students would be at other schools and down the line, that'll impact the allocations at those schools. Okay. Moving on, go ahead.
Can I, so maybe just to sum up again, the budget process to just greatly simplify what Jeff and his team does. You know, we started, um, the fiscal year, um, in a balanced situation. Now, there were special session cuts and so forth and then enrollment drop, but we started balanced. So expenditures equaled revenues, right? And what Jeff and his team are doing are saying, okay, how much are expenditures going up and how much are revenues going up? And so normally, we'd match them up and give you that number of what that mismatch is. If expenditures are going up higher than revenues, right, now we have a deficit we've got to stabilize, right? Um, and, and, and that's the process throughout, right? So we would start, say, you know, say we had a deficit. Then we do all this analysis Jeff's talking about to bring expenditures back in line with revenues. And then ultimately, we're gonna match them up again to you in the tentative pro- budget that we submit in April and the final budget we submit by June 8th. So that we're constantly kind of doing that analysis, saying each side of the ledger is doing with the ultimate goal being we need to balance them. Does that make sense? Okay.
Vice President Cottle?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, so the Coral Academy Elementary School that's opening next fall, next fall?
Yes.
Have principals reported back that they know of families that they for sure are leaving those elementary schools down south? Are we not there yet?
I'll go ahead and take that one. So we're also working with, if you remember, we brought forward to the board, um, we're working with a vendor who's going to kind of work with our schools as far as recruitment of students. And so that's taking, you know, now we're going down that road, um, as far as with that particular vendor. So we'll get some of that information, not only from our principals, but also from that vendor as well. And, and they're going to be working, um, not only in South Meadows, but also in the Spanish Springs area as well too. Those two targeted areas.
Great. Thank you.
I mean, the benef- I guess the benefit, Coral Academy is a district-sponsored charter. So we would be able to see, I do believe, when someone disenrolls, unenrolls from one of our schools and enrolls in Coral. Um, but, but I, I've seen the billboards. I mean, they're recruiting right now for students. So we don't have those numbers yet.
Okay.
Please, go ahead.
Uh, so moving on to slide 31 and 32, we're gonna discuss, uh, our proposed budget strategies for the remainder of this budget process. Uh, so going to slide 32, we'll talk about our, our budget goals based on our board policies we adopted in 2018. So the first, which we've, we've talked about already here, is having a structurally balanced budget where our, our revenues equal our expenditures. Um, that's important to continue and we will do our best to continue to do that. Uh, the next bullet point is having an unrestricted fund balance of eight to 10%. As Vice President Cottle pointed out earlier, um, not having the, the guarantee in the new funding formula. We'll need that in case we have a drop in revenues and, and need a way to, to pay our bills there. Uh, we also have monthly and quarterly reporting, uh, looking at sunset reviews and evaluation of new programs. The avoidance of incremental budgeting or just saying, okay, rolling our budget forward and that's it. So like we talked about, we will reexamine our patterns of spending. So going again through this book, line by line, uh, looking at vacancies, other ways to make efficiency, efficiencies, we'll continue, continue to do those things. We'll also be bringing these, these budget policies to the board in March for review, just an, and update as well. So next, we'll, we'll look at, uh, proposed strategies for closing the budget gap. So as we go through, get information on the governor's budget, we'll also be doing many of these things over here. So again, the line item budget, budget review. We've talked about the weighted funding. So aligning our, our programs to the new weighted funding that we're getting from the state. And then using the, the federal stimulus to address academic recovery and other needs like social, emotional learning, mental health, uh, offset any reductions to the weighted funding. So help us phase, phase down to those funding levels. And then in a worst-case scenario, like we talked about earlier, uh, using some of those federal stimulus dollars to support existing general fund programs. And then, uh, again, as we talked about, uh, doing the priority-based review and looking at potential service level reductions. So we'll do analysis on that during the spring, but we won't make any decisions on those until we have more information about what the state's budget actually is and what the final impact is to us. So moving on to slide 34, um, so this is, you know, prior to, to next month's work session, something we've been doing right now for the, uh, the last couple of weeks, this week and into next week, are meeting with those central service departments to review the vacancies, the line item spending, any potential reorgs and low priority and/or un- unmandated programs. Uh, looks like we've covered a few of these things, doing further analysis of the governor's recommended budget and how that comparable wage index impacts us as well. Moving on to slide 35, this will take us from the February work session through May. So again, continually our analysis of the governor's recommended budget and the people-centered funding plan. Also, uh, developing a stimulus plan, funding recommendation. So a multi-year plan and to, to cover some of those items we talked about earlier. Were there any questions?
I do, yeah, I was gonna say, I do see something. Vice President Cottle?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, this might be for superintendent, but I'm not sure. So within this process, how does our in-house allocation process fit into this for the next school year?
So typically, over the last couple of years, um, we spent a lot of time on that process. And really, it's a combination of HR, working very closely with business and finance, but importantly, working very closely with the area superintendents. And in the past, that model hasn't really been put into place, but I can tell you over the last couple of years, they've really been a very tight-knit group during this time because it does a couple of things. Number one, it allows our principals to have direct access to the area superintendents and give them updates, um, on a consistent basis. It also allows us to have that communication as far as we really need our schools to be putting registration information into Infinite Campus as soon as we get that. And, and that's, and that's a stress on the school level as well too. But once we have all of that information together, then it makes for a much tighter process than in the past.
Do you expect with all of the unknowns, maybe more unknowns than usual in this year's budget process, that our in-house allocation process will not move as fast as it had in the past? I think was February is like allocation month. Do you still expect to try to do that work? Or is that gonna slow down based on trickle-down from the state?
So it's, it's kind of like the perfect storm, actually, like what we're facing outside right now. So we've got, we've got the per pupil funding formula. We have a legislative session, and we also have the, the ability, you know, as far as enrollment and tracking that because of the global pandemic. So all of those things together. But to answer your question very specifically, we will be monitoring it very, very closely and we will try and keep on track as much as possible. But our principals are great. I mean, they, they know, um, during this time, especially during a legislative session, that sometimes we're going to be a little bit late to call as far as when allocations are going to be exactly released.
No, that helps because the, the system just, you know, the angst in the system, you know, and everyone just kind of needs to understand where we are in this process. And because people get nervous about, you know, do I have to switch schools and the likes? And, you know, we hear those questions. So it's good for all of us as trustees, kind of know the timeline that we're in. And so when those questions come, we have an understanding of kind of what's happening in that timeframe. So I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I would just say that the, the work that's been done the last couple of years during this time has really been helpful. Um, I mean, it's, it's, I used to cringe when I knew it was allocation time, um, because it, you certainly will get feedback from families, as we should, and, and teachers and so on at schools as, as, as we should because it's certainly concerning. Um, but it was just a barrage because there's just more information needed to be had. And I think that part of what we see as, as the difference is the principals being, being more involved directly with the area and the superintendents and the area superintendents being really deliberate about working with, with the, uh, with the administrators, I should say. And so people are more involved in the process. So then you understand that you don't like it anymore, but you certainly understand it a little bit better. And so that, that, some of those questions that we would get, that was just simply about not understanding. You know, we don't, we don't get nearly as much. So that work has been, has been done well. And I think if we continue that and just, you know, hang on, you know, you've seen the last couple of years, a lot more work has been done to make it more collaborative, to be more communicative about it and so on. Then I think we, um, we have a, we have a, a good foundation for these last couple of years to, to work on.
Okay. Um, I'll take slide 36. So let me just say, I know this is tough to go through. This is kind of all theoretical. We're talking about the budget process and we don't have a starting point like we usually would at this time of year. So I get, if you're looking at it like, okay, what does this all mean, right? But we're just trying to lay out the process. What will happen is, again, our, we anticipate having that preliminary start number for you next month. And each month, we'll be coming to you with analysis. And so we'll be honing and honing and honing the budget. Um, and, and, and we'll keep updating you on what that preliminary budget number looks like, that deficit number or surplus number looks like. Um, we'll respond to you when you have questions about what analysis you would like to see. We'll try to turn that around for the next budget meeting. And so it'll be an iterative process that we'll be going through, but touching base every month on kind of where we stand. If there does need to be big decisions made, you know, what we typically do is try to tee those up for you and, and have those discussions in the spring, but hold off until the end of the legislative session to see where we really end up. Um, it's, it's, it's very challenging for those who've been through it. I, I mean, it's incredibly stressful and challenging for our staff, you know, for the budget team, for you. We get it. But this is kind of the way it's laid out in state law. Um, so I just, I know it's tough to kind of, with nothing to grab onto, have this discussion today, but at least we've lined out the process for you. So if you see something you want to see in the process, by all means, I mean, we want to hear your input. Um, but the slide on 36 again tries to, you know, graphically show you kind of, again, the two kind of thrusts or, or analysis that'll need to be done, right? So we've got the budget, the normal budget process where we're, you know, calculating that preliminary budget deficit or, or surplus every month based on changes to the budget that we're bringing to you that you would approve. But now we've got a second kind of set of analysis. Again, it's more on the educator side, but they're gonna put together plans for, again, academic recovery and all the things that need to be done to address what's happened since the bank pandemic started in mid-March, right? And that'll utilize stimulus funding. So we'll need to bring them together to you, which is what this chart tries to say. We're trying to, we will have to merge those two analysis and bring to you a combined recommendation on how we will solve our general fund deficit over here and how we will program, new, new programming and new funding for academic recovery and other programs the academic side develops. That will be the second half of the budget that'll have to be finalized by June.
If, if I may, I, I think it's just important, um, for all of us as, as trustees, as we look, look, move forward and look at the budget, is just recognizing that because of the pandemic and the way we've had to deliver education, uh, there, there are students that have, have missed some things, that have fallen behind, and there's some learning loss that's there. And so the part, what he, what, um, Mr. Mather speaks of, uh, new programs needed and so on, is to help those students recover their learning loss. Um, it's a, it's a concern that's, that every school district across the country has, but we would be remiss if we go forward as though all of the learning processes have always been, had have always been in place, um, have still been in place. And so part of the, the conversation could be, you know, why are you developing something new when we don't have budget money for what it is that we have? And that's why, because those students need to have the opportunity to be brought up to speed, to recover their learning loss and to really get back on track. So that's, that's the reason for new programming in a time when, hey, things are tight. Why would you look at it? That's why.
Thank you. That's absolutely right. Okay, the next section then, unless there are other questions, is a preliminary outlook on other funds. We focused on the general fund, obviously, but here we talk about some other funds so that you can see at least the initial thoughts on those funds. Jeff, I think you're gonna take the first slide?
Yes. Uh, so looking at special revenue funds, uh, as we talked about earlier, most of those will be folded into weighted funding, uh, or, or these categorical grants will, and some that will be folded into base funding. Uh, we also have certain non-pupil-based categorical grants that will remain. Uh, one off the top of my head is, you know, there's some small CTE grants, uh, and those, those would stay outside the people-centered funding plan. Uh, we'll also be looking at, at federal grants. Believe there's, there's some funding that's expected to increase in, in some of the federal grants we receive. Um, our E-rate fund, we'll be working with the Information Technology Department. They're, they're the gurus on, on the E-rate, and we'll work with them to project the FY22 budget and what we can expect there. Uh, looking at our Medicaid fund, we have, or the, the governor's recommended budget restores 6% Medicaid provider rate reductions. So those 6% rate reductions were included as part of the special session to help balance the, the state's budget. Um, those are supposed to be restored. And then we'll be working with Frontline, who's our, our Medicaid consultant, to determine what the total fiscal impact to the district will be. Uh, next, Mark will go over capital projects and debt service funds.
Thank you, Jeff. So slide 39 gives you the schedule for development of our five-year capital improvement program. This provides the plan, um, for all of the projects and costs, um, for the next five years. Only the first year is actually appropriated and locked into the budget. But you can see there's a lot of work in the spring as we work to lay out facilities based either on enrollment trends or just, you know, with the Debbie Smith CTE Academy, for instance, what's already kind of been, um, conceptually approved by the board. We'll schedule those, those projects out. We'll update the costs, and then we will bring it to the capital funding protect- it to the Capital Funding Protection Committee for their review and for your review. And with ultimately, we will need to fold in the first year, the five-year CIP, into our annual operating budget. So that's the timeline there. And then on the next slide, we talk a little bit again about our capital project and debt service funds. And we've, I think, talked about this before, but just to update you, property tax revenues have followed projections very closely. Again, there's enough abatement in current property tax valuations such that, you know, we have quite a bit of buffer even if there were, you know, housing values fell. We would still see growth in our property tax revenues for at least a few years. However, we don't plan on issuing any rollover bonds in fiscal year '22 at this time. So, you know, it's just a matter of receiving those monies in. In terms of our WC1 sales tax revenues, they have behaved very well. We were very conservative when we prepared the budget. And again, we prepared the budget last spring when we were at the very front end of the COVID pandemic. We assumed actually a 21% drop in our revenues from $48 million to $38 million. And through the first four months of the fiscal year, those sales taxes are up nearly 5%. And the next chart kind of shows you that. So, you know, again, there were a couple of months last fiscal year in which we saw revenues dip from the prior year. But aside from those couple of months, we've continued to see every month having a higher revenue post than the same month of the prior fiscal year. So it's been kind of amazing to see that. I guess you could say the federal stimulus plan worked, and that has continued to support spending. And Washoe County, again, has done a lot of work to be a more diversified economy over the last decade, and this is the result of that. These numbers are not the same as Southern Nevada. So at least so far, things look well in terms of that revenue source.
Vice President, call.
Thank you, Madam President. Mark, I was hoping that you could just give an estimate on how our debt coverage is going into the next fiscal year.
Yeah, we can certainly report that. I mean, property taxes were somewhat tight, you know, between 5% to 10% coverage. But again, that's a very stable revenue. And so I think we're on track for that. We may even be a little bit higher. And then the WC1 sales tax revenues over debt services, there's a significant cushion there. I don't have the precise number for you, I'm sorry, trustee Cottle, but we can get that for you. But it's, you know, it's significant, and we have significant reserves as well.
Yeah, no, that's okay. The question just kind of came to me, but basically what you're saying is that we're in a, going into the next fiscal year, we're in a strong position with our overall debt coverage.
Absolutely. We're much stronger than what we budgeted.
Great. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice President, call. Trustee Church?
Thank you. Yeah, this is obviously a big, big issue for me, a big concern. When WC1 passed, it was projected to bring in, I think it was $87 million a year, and obviously, that didn't materialize, but you were very wise to budget the way you did. The overall capital projects issue, and I'm glad we get to bring it up now and not at the regular board meeting or whatever, to me is so complex that I'm just suggesting or asking or just throwing it out there that maybe we need some kind of a hour or so dedicated to nothing but this to understand it. You know, we're going to be talking about O'Brien Middle School later, and even that is so complicated, it's broken down into like four different areas to get it off the ground. So, I mean, that's just my gut feeling is that even I, having followed this and attended so many meetings, it's so complicated, and there's so much room for discussion. And I do have some thoughts on how we can increase the WC1 revenue even beyond what we have. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Church. Okay, please, continue.
Okay. Then turning out to slide 42, we have internal service funds. I think Jeff's going to speak to that.
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, so looking first at our property and casualty fund, last year, risk management worked with our team to reset our deductibles in order to minimize cost increases. But we have increased in total exposures, or our total assets have been growing with more schools being built, and that'll likely require increased support going forward. So to talk about financial trends, in FY20, the fund saw a loss of $1.3 million. And then the FY21 budget, last year, during the budget process, we included $1 million more in support from the general fund. Then looking at, again, trend analysis, the premium for this fund has increased an average of about 15% each year. So that fund will likely require even more support from the general fund in FY22. Looking at our workers' compensation fund, there was a $60,000 loss in fiscal year '20. But looking at projections for FY21 and FY22, the fund's net position is sufficient to absorb those small losses. Going to slide 43, we have the health insurance fund. So we saw usage drop off at the end of FY20, and it's remained relatively flat in FY21. So it's kept our expenses lower than budgeted. We'll continue to assess that fund and then come back with, in the spring, with any potential rating, rate changes there. And then looking at the wellness fund, this is a special revenue fund, but it's linked to our health insurance fund. There's a $104,000 surplus in FY20, and we might see a small loss in FY21 or FY22. But again, that position has a fund balance that is strong.
Thank you, Jeff. We have a question. Vice President, call.
Thank you, Madam President. It's a quick question on the health insurance fund. So I assume that the usage went down middle of last year because of COVID and hospitals weren't, people weren't going to the hospitals, you know, and whatnot due to COVID. So going into the next year, do we think that overall rates will come down just because this last year, we, hospitals in a lot of ways have not seen the usage they've had in the past? I know that there's been some talk it will and some talk that maybe it won't because they've spent a lot of money in other areas. The insurance companies are nervous about. Is there any indication of where we could be going into the next year, or is it unclear at this point?
That's a great question. It's another thing that's unclear at this point. So at the Health Insurance Committee meetings, we've heard from our consultants that everything is unknown, and the industry is just kind of waiting to see what happens next because no one's dealt with anything like this before. So again, we'll continue to work with that consultant and do our fund projections and see where we end up there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President, call. God bless you. Please, Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you. Moving on, next, Mark is going to talk about the Nutrition Services Fund.
Yeah, so this is a bright spot. You know, as you know, we made some tough decisions in November with rightsizing staff. As I think we've reported to you, we've seen an uptick in meals served since. So I think we've stabilized the fund. But as we noted much earlier in the afternoon, the stimulus package that was passed in December of '20 provides this new floor for revenue for the months during, you know, the first two months of the pandemic, second half of March, and then the full months of April through June of 2020. And so based on that floor of revenue, we expect to be able to receive $2.3 million back in revenues for those months. And that's nearly all of the $3 million loss we had. So that will help restore the fund's cash position and net position and help stabilize things greatly. But, you know, as I'm sure we'll be coming to you, the fund itself is now kind of, again, stabilized and doing much better. So we made the decisions we needed to make, and it's bearing fruit. In terms of next steps here, you know, this is really where truly we're looking for your feedback. If there are any items or strategies the board would like us to look at, you know, Jeff laid out much of the analysis we do. If you think there's gaps in the process that you've identified or just thoughts, you know, by all means, we're open to your requests. And any interest in any particular area, we'll take a look at. So I'll put that out there. You know, as we've noted, we plan to come to you monthly. We think that makes sense. It gives us time to do the analysis in between those meetings. But certainly, if you felt like you needed to meet more often, or just, you know, gosh, Mark, waiting a whole month till we get a preliminary number, that's too long. I mean, if that was your, you know, we can certainly schedule something sooner. So, you know, again, we have questions here. We want to make sure the information we give you, the analysis we give you, is what you want and what you need to help make decisions. And again, if there's any additional information you'd like us to look at, please let us know. We're happy to do that.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. First, I saw trustee Thicke.
Yes, thank you both for this very in-depth presentation. I think this is baptism by fire by some of our new trustees here, at least for me. I do want to touch on the, you mentioned earlier in the presentation, the federal funds will be received, and we want to focus on mental health as one component, right? I guess I'd be interested in later on, understanding like how we might invest those funds. Obviously, we have many students in the district, and as they're coming back hopefully into the classroom here soon, we may need more help in that area to address some, you know, students that might be in crisis or need some social, emotional help. You've seen recently where the city of Reno approved the Talkspace app, for example, which may not suit our students. But I'm just kind of thinking, like, what can we do on a large scale as, you know, we only have so much staff in that area to help our students? And I know there's privacy concerns around that, as there should be, but just something I want to put out there and have considered.
Thank you, trustee Thicke. Vice President, call.
Thank you, Madam President. And I would 100% agree with what trustee Thicke said because in all industries, the reentry plan is going to be interesting, where all of a sudden, one's back, and then you see things maybe you didn't notice before. So just kind of being ready for that. I was just curious, going back to nutrition services, if any recommendations are going to come to us with the staffing levels? Because we made that decision in November, and now we're seeing, hopefully, students are going to be returning soon, next year. Federal funds helping us there. Are we looking to bring back staff to get back to those levels? Is that going to be a gradual approach? How are we going to deal with that? Because that's going to be the obvious question when staff see, you're getting money for this. I was one of the staff members, I was furloughed, so that means I'm coming back. I just want to make sure that we're kind of clear on what the recommendation will be going forward. And Mark, I appreciate all your efforts. Jeff, you too, in this process. I always enjoy your presentations. You're very honest and direct and give us good options to deal with. And so I appreciate that professionalism in a challenging area. So thank you.
Thank you.
I would say, just, I don't always enjoy your presentations, Mark.
I understand.
But, you know, okay, I just wanted to let the record show that enjoyment is not shared by all. But I do agree that you give us great options, and the value that both of you bring to us as trustees, help us make decisions, it's really, really, really helpful. I saw you next, trustee Jeff Church.
Thank you, Madam President. I too echo what she just said. I can't say I enjoy it, but very informative and direct. I guess it gets back to that thing I brought up earlier is, my gut is I'd rather do something now on a smaller scale than have to do something massive later. And that's why I call out to you, the whole staff, from the superintendent down, you know, for input on that. Talking to people offline, and I may not have this term right in a budgetary approach, but a tripwire or event-driven budget is something that I'd like to at least throw out there if I understand what that means. And it kind of means we don't have to meet every month. If we meet and we make the tough decisions now based on a tripwire, for example, the $20 million lawsuit with the school district, not school district, but Incline Village versus Washoe County, if we make rational decisions now rather than waiting until it happens, so if we can make the decisions now based on a tripwire, you know, that if the budget, if the governor cuts XYZ, what do we do? So I'd rather make those decisions rationally rather than emotionally down the road. And this is where actually, I'm going to make our legal counsel, he's got his pen out, so I'm going to bring up NRS 288-150 and collective bargaining. I think we have to look at collective bargaining, or even those that don't, to say, if we reach the point of a fiscal crisis, what do we do? And I know I just heard there's no appetite for any kind of furloughs or whatever, but could we defer pay increases? What about a voluntary furlough? There may be positions, you know, we can't have teachers out of the classroom, but there may be voluntary positions where someone says, yeah, I've got extra income, I'll take a furlough. You give, offer it to me, I'll take it. As far as not filling positions, it makes me a little bit uncomfortable to do that carte blanche because if it's a bus driver, and then we got to pay overtime to another bus driver, is it cheaper to have that, you know, to hire another bus driver? So, you know, and I'm making the tough statement here that we can't take some type of pay cut, furlough, voluntary or otherwise, we can't take it off the table if we reach a certain tripwire. We just can't say no at this point, in my opinion. And so I guess I just defer on to you to, if there's anything we need to do now, and everything I said is just my opinion, you know, not the board's, obviously, but I've reached out to other people in the community, and I kind of, when they talked about the tripwire approach, I thought, well, what does that mean? You know, it's a military term, but what does that mean? So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, trustee Church. Dr. Diane.
Thank you, gentlemen. I really appreciate the information. There's a 50,000-foot view laced with some of the weeds, and I really appreciate that. I personally would appreciate having any information along the way that you can share, you know, in little bits and pieces, not a 300-page document, that can inform my thinking. I do like the idea of monthly budget sessions, and if we have to call an emergency budget session, so be it. I think that's what we have to do. I've been with 20, for 25 years, I was with Trekey Meadows Community College and so higher education. So I'm very familiar with the hope and prayer strategy, and then wait for the information so that you can make final decisions. And I'll just let you know, personally, I'm comfortable with that because that's what it is. And I have watched Washoe County, been involved with Washoe County for many years, and I'm extremely comfortable with your approach. You have a kind, caring, and informative way of helping me understand, and I really, really appreciate that because although I certainly can't disagree with trustee Church, it does feel a little bit like a tsunami, but you help, you helped the boat stay afloat, and I appreciate that. So any information, you can just, even through a quick, you know, email, I would appreciate it because that'll help me, or guide me to something that I need to read, that would help. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we might avail ourselves of the superintendent's highlights to be, to do that. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. I would just add, I want a thanks, really, to, again, your expertise, as I stated earlier. You give us a level of confidence because we know you've done the work, you've dug in, and you're always very open when we ask ideas and think, what about this, what about that? And certainly, I, as a person from the outside, right, not doing what you do every day, I really appreciate that. I would just like to say, I concur with us not getting into the practice of budgeting one-time funds as a part of our budget. I think that gets to be in a slippery slope. I do think that there are avenues and opportunities for us to use that to help us with some of those expenditures that we have going forward and that we can anticipate, and even help to get us ready for perhaps some one-time expenditures as we prepare for the next time there may be something crazy that comes out and everyone has to stay home, or whatever the case may be. But in terms of it being a part of our general fund, I don't... fund, I don't, I don't think there's a lot of wisdom, you know, in that for us, at least certainly not at this point. And I do think that we want to be in a position where, I'm going to agree with my colleague, Trustee Call, we want to be in a position where we have the financial, we have the 8% to 10% general fund solidly because there's so many things that are unpredictable going forward. And I'm a risk taker by nature, that's just kind of, you know, who I am. But I just think some wisdom around that, right? I think I feel, I feel more comfortable just because of the amount of dollars that could swing one way or the other, that could have a significant impact on educating our students and the experiences of our teachers in the classroom and what happens with our families and so on. So, I just thank you for that. I do welcome the once-a-month meetings. They're always opportunities to ask questions along the way if people need to. I think if any of our trustees, new trustees or whatever, would like to say, hey, man, I have some, I have some questions. Can we sit down? I mean, that's what, that's what we go to trust to our superintendent with, and she'll sit down and meeting for us with whomever we need to so that additional information can be had, so that we can have as much information as we can, so we can make the best decisions that we can. And always, an additional budget work session, it's happened in the past. We didn't think we're going to have one this time, but we're going to put one in two hours before our next board meeting or something. And we certainly will always reserve that right as things change like last week. I mean, look how that went, right? As things change and as it gets closer and as the session goes on, there'll be a lot of flip-flopping as we know as well. So, I think we'll certainly, colleagues just know this as our, as our board leadership, we'll think about that and talk, hey, let's throw this one in here because we need to, because that's part of what, what three of us talk about when we meet on those, as we talk about agendas and what should happen because we want to be able to not react but respond as things change. And I think you've put us in a great position for that. So, thanks, thanks to you both.
Other comments from anyone?
Well, thank you very much. Slide 47 is kind of, well, second to last kind of slide with content. And here we talk about our public engagement efforts. And this is something, you know, we kind of rebuilt back in 2018. And we've done it every year since. And sometimes it's a challenge to put it together, again, to provide you with meaningful information. This year, these are, you know, some of our quick thoughts that, you know, we've done a budget survey. Sometimes we've asked, okay, what programs are near and dear to your heart, public, you know, what, what do you think could be cut and so forth? I know there's a lot of angst around that. This year, we think it makes sense to start talking about potential uses of stimulus funding and where is the public's priorities in terms of academic recovery and mental health supports and social, emotional learning. So, I think we thought that would be a data point you would like to see. So, I see shaking heads, yes, so that's good.
Fantastic.
And then we would have a follow-up virtual forum. I thought the last one we did was really good. It got more people involved than the physical onsite forums we had. We could get more questions, you know. I thought it just worked very well. So, we could share the results of that survey. And then, again, start, you know, we've always had this edu, not always, we've had this education component lately to our public forums, to start educating the public about why do we find ourselves in this position, right? And explaining that to the public, hopefully in an understandable way, so that they can go armed, you know, with that knowledge wherever they want to go. So, those would be our thoughts for, you know, engaging the public in the budget process, which is always a little tricky. I mean, they, they just don't have the information you all have. So, it can be challenging. But I think, from what I've heard from the board, they've consistently wanted this. So, that this is our proposal for this year.
I would just like to say that I, I've enjoyed the feedback. You're right, it gets a little scary, right? Because we always know a little bit more, because we've had more meetings and more sessions and read more stuff and all of this. But I have benefited greatly. I think we as a board have. It has impacted some of our budget decisions since we've started doing these a few years ago, as it should, right? As it should, because it's nothing better than going to the public and saying, hey, this is why this was decided. Here, here's this priority list. And they're, they're a part of this thing as well. So, I've actually benefited from that personally in those times that we've done it. And I think the community has been good at showing up and sharing those concerns, some of the concerns that were mentioned. I mean, mental health, for an example, that's, we know that's going to be big on the radar. We look at, you know, the New York Times article, we're a part of it. Our colleagues down south, we're a part of it, and the impact of children. And we had some emails come in of late about that as well. I mean, those are things that are going to be on the radar, but to what extent? Maybe there are other things that are important to people that we have, that we have not thought of. So, I'm glad you have that as a part of it. I think that needs to continue to be a part of it. It's because if things go the way it could go, it's like, hey, we can, we can have some money here to really do something great. And how do we help our kids best? How do we help our schools best, our teachers best, their families best with this money? And so getting their feedback, getting their input, I should say, I welcome that.
Trustee Call?
Thank you, Madam President. That's a great point, and I do think they should continue. I also think it can be an opportunity to go over expectations with the funding we have. And to go back to President Taylor's point that I agree with, and Mark, I agree with your statement about how to spend the federal funds. Because, one, if we spend the federal funds to plug budget holes, as was stated, it's still a problem. We just don't deal with it later. We're not dealing with any extra issues we have due to COVID because we're using that money just to kind of do what we would normally do anyway. On the flip side, when we use that money, it has to be clear that it's going to run out at some point. So, if we, if we do something with the expectation, it's a long-term program. When the funding dries up, now we have a program, we have to figure out how to fund going forward, which we're not going to be able to do because this is 30-plus million dollars. That's not going to just appear to us one day from the state. So, I think we have to be clear on expectations for what funds we have and what our goals are for these funds. And I think once we have the base down, the feedback we're going to get will be much more valuable because everyone's expectations are on the same page. Hope that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. Thank you very much. One of the things the superintendent and Jeff and I have talked about is somewhat of a multi-year budget. Because I do think, you're right, we can't kick the can down the road, right? We can't defer difficult decisions because we'll just blow through the money and be in the same place in three years. On the other hand, right, again, if we can model kind of a phase down of certain areas or to cover the reductions in funding we have in the current biennium with that money, and then get back on the glide path of hopefully increased state funding, you know, we have that opportunity. And so, I don't know what form or fashion that multi-year budget would come. And it's challenging, but it's something we'll work on to try to give you a sense of, okay, here's how we're going to step into it. And again, hopefully with the recovery taking hold in other parts of the state, the state's budget, right, will rebound, and there will be more funding for K through 12. I'm going to dream that, dream right now. But how do we get through this period so that we can get on that trajectory? So, I appreciate your comments.
Okay. Any other comments from my colleagues? Okay, I don't think so. Is there, if you want to, you have anything else you might want to add? Dr. McNeil?
No, I just want to, you know, thank Mark and Jeff. And this was Jeff's, you know, kind of his debut as far as our budget director. And so, you did a very fine job. Truly appreciate that. And, you know, and I've said this before on presentations, there's a lot of work that goes on in making these presentations. And it's not just words on a PowerPoint. It's deep thinking. And our entire leadership team has just, you know, really come together on putting this, this presentation together. The work is done at the, at the business and finance side, but the conversations and the planning is an absolute leadership team, board, board-level decision. So, I just, I really appreciate the conversation today. I think this is probably one of your biggest, besides hiring and evaluating a superintendent, the budget priorities or the, you know, the, the board's purview. And so, I just really appreciate the conversation today. So, thank you.
Well, thank you to you both. And so now we know we just blame Jeff, right? Because he's new. That, that's what I got.
I believe that's how it goes.
Yeah, that's, that's what I got.
President?
Yes.
To that point, Jeff, next time, could you put some pictures in here? Just something to, you know, relax our eyes.
Yes, we'll brighten it up next time.
Lighten it up a little bit.
I did want to comment that not realizing what this was as I'm preparing, I just hit print and you killed my printer. Very sorry about that.
I'm just, rookie mistake. Rookie mistake, rookie mistake. All right. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen. We really appreciate it. Before we go ahead, we can, we'll adjourn before we, our board meeting at 4:00. Any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. We have no public comment. So, we will be adjourned until 4:00 PM, until our board meeting at 4:00 PM. Thanks for all of you who are here. I see our area soups are in the room and so on and other distinguished personnel. Thank you for being here to be able to answer questions if we need it. So, we'll be back here at 4:00.